Live, beautiful. It's a date. Good evening and welcome. It is January 7th, 2016. This is the New Market School Board. Want to let everybody know that the school board went into session at 6 o'clock and immediately moved into non-public. We had a meeting with members of the New Market Police Department, talking about school security and safety. It was, I will speak for the board and just say it was very informative. We really appreciate the great work being done by members of our local police department and our school resource officer as well. So that was a powerful hour for the board, which we'll certainly, certainly we'll be talking about in a public way more moving forward. Other than that, we adjourned just a few moments ago, and now we're in our public meeting. I would ask everyone to join us, rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anything on the agenda? I'm looking around, wondering if I've got any programmatic announcements to lead off tonight. I think the students are here to observe and comment, and we hope you have a great experience. I'd open the floor up to public comment if there's anyone that would like to present or speak to us tonight. Okay.
I think they get extra points if they talk.
Do they get extra points for public participation?
I'm just saying.
No? Nobody needs extra credit in that for it. Got it. We hear. All right, then you won't, but she will. So we'll ask our student rep, Julia, to give us a report, tell us what's happening.
All right, so midterms start on the 19th and they continue through Friday, the 22nd. Those will be full day classes, so high school students will have four classes in a day, and it's up to their teacher to decide when their midterm will be. The second semester, or the first semester and the second quarter will end on that Friday, so. And the Monday that is on the 18th is a no-school day for Martin Luther King Day, and there will be an early release on the 27th. The boys' basketball record is 3-1, and they're playing tonight at Epping, but their next home game is Monday, 11th, against Pittsfield, and the same goes with the girls, but their record is 1-4. The hockey team's record is 3-2, and their next game will be this Saturday against Winnicottet. And track meet, they had a meet, I think, yesterday, and I know two people placed first in their, whatever they call it, their...
Eats.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. And their next meet is on Sunday at UNH, so. And there will be a junior parent night on the Tuesday, the 12th, at 6:30 to talk about colleges. And the eighth grade's annual chil- chowder challenge will be on Friday, the 29th, at 5 o'clock.
Friday, the 29th. Any questions? Okay. Hey, that's awesome. Thank you very much. We don't have a, we didn't stick a calendar, we didn't stick our events calendar in the packet, I don't think, I don't see it. So what I would remind everybody is that tonight is the 7th. The school board is back in session two nights, two weeks from tonight, on the 21st. And again on the 3rd of February, is it the 3rd? That Thursday now, I think, I don't know why that rings a bell, but. Let's move, what's that? So let's move right along. Let's talk, first up for items of discussion, Jay LaBranch has made a proposal or made a suggestion to us. I think the board has seen it via email, but I think Mr. LaBranch is with us tonight, and we'd love to stick him with a microphone and ask him to talk to us about backboards at the elementary school gym, please.
What I'm trying to do is solicit some type of estimate from the manufacturer of some backboards to change the wooden backboards in the elementary school to like a fiberglass backboard. I guess the reason for it is, is just trying to continually upgrade what we currently have, and rather wait for something to happen to it, let's see if we can fix it. So I'm asking for more so a representative of the school to meet with the manufacturer on a given day that works for everybody, and they can go over what actually needs to be done. Once we have an idea what needs to be done, we can then start getting pricing. Once we get pricing, then I can start trying to find funds to make the correction or renew the boards. So I mean, just need somebody that could meet me or meet the manufacturer at the school at any time to do that.
So would that be Mr. Pine and Mrs. Miller?
Jamie Hayes.
And maybe Jamie, as the A.D., he could come over and help out?
Yeah.
So what do we just, we have to let somebody know, and then they can get in touch with Mr. LaBranch?
Yeah, I think...
I can coordinate it.
Okay.
I can talk to Jamie tomorrow and coordinate it.
The only thing I'd recommend is maybe have Mr. Critcher or somebody that's familiar with. The thing I'm concerned about the rims or those backboards is, is the way that they're structured. I mean, those have been there for a very long time, and I just want to make sure someone's familiar with how they were put in. I don't know if Jamie would know, I'm sure he might have some background on it, but I don't know if he'd know exactly how they were put in.
So Mr. Critcher, too?
Mr. Critcher, too, probably. Or Brian, if Brian, Mr. O'Connor's still around, he could definitely help out as well.
So I'm looking, what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing in what I read is, you're hoping that, one, we'll be supportive of having those changed out, two, you need some help to make sure that we know what we're doing, we do it right in that building, and that we're involved so that it's not just you sticking something on the wall.
Exactly.
Three, the permission to go ahead and change the gym.
Yeah.
And you're hoping you can raise a bunch of that, a bunch of the funds?
Yeah, I mean, once I get an estimate, it costs, I may not know if it's 2,000, 8,000, 10, I don't know what the cost is. I've got to get somebody in there. I already have a manufacturer I've been talking to. I sent some pictures to them, and they came back with like 40 questions, so I didn't know, I didn't, rather than go back to somebody and just keep going back and forth, they said, "Well, can you come down and look at it?" So once I get the pricing, then I will just, I will try to find the funds somehow, whether it's fundraising. We have the ability to do some fundraising within our organization, within the New Market Basketball Organization, through tournaments that we're proposing to run and so forth. So it may not be something that's done this year, next year, maybe two or three years, but it depends on how much we have to raise, but we need at least a starting point, getting an estimate, what it's going to cost.
You know, I think, I think actually it's an expense that ought to be borne by the school, it's a school facility issue. And I got to thank Jay for taking over the basketball program for me this year and allowing me extra time to be here and doing these types of things. He's done an awesome job on it, and I'm familiar with those baskets, those hoops, I still coach, and so they're homemade, and they're showing their age, and...
They're homemade?
They look like it. They look like a piece of plywood with some various plumbing things to stick it all together, but they're not, they're not very, I don't know if I'd call it a safety issue, but I don't love the way they look, you know, and you don't want things up high that are a safety issue. And they get a lot of use, so they've been there longer than I've been in town.
I want to say they were in that school when I was there, so.
But I don't, it just seems wrong that the Basketball Association would be trying to raise money, so I think we ought to figure it out.
So I guess maybe what, we've got a consensus already, I'm not sure we need a vote, this consensus is, I want to tell the administration to go ahead and support making this happen, and find out what the costs are, and then come back to us whenever it's appropriate with a plan for how they're going to do it as well.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that good?
Thanks, Jay.
Can you just email me?
Sure.
And if you have Mr. Critcher's number?
I don't. I usually just go see him at the school, so I can, I can do, just email you and get all the information.
Okay. That's perfect. Hey, we, again, we appreciate you stepping up and helping, and thanks for leading the basketball effort, and let's see what we can do, and let's see if we can do it sooner than two or three years. We'll make it happen.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda is the school calendar. We have another version. Been a whole lot, I don't know, it's been the hardest thing in the world to accomplish this year, apparently is just agreeing.
Didn't we vote on it already?
Well, we've had it on the agenda for months, so. We're going to vote on it tonight, though.
The difference is, if you look at the last three lines on the right-hand column, why are we doing this?
Why are we doing this?
Current, last day, get rid of that. The projected last day of school is the 23rd. It includes five makeup days. Get rid of that stuff on the 16th. The whole notion of doing what we talked about was that we didn't signal to people that we were going to be done on the 16th, so that they could be upset when it's really the 23rd. And if we don't think we're going to have any snow days, and maybe that's the case now, because we're into January and we haven't lost one, but we didn't, we didn't change the calendar, we didn't tell anybody they had to work any additional hours, I don't, I don't see that that makes sense.
The thing that was raised to me was that there was a concern that we've added five days to the calendar.
We haven't.
I understand that.
Just to tell them that, so the calendar that was in our packet, has that been shown to the Teachers Association?
Yes, it has.
Okay. I don't have any great desire to see that changed, Nate, I don't know why. Would you like to speak to it? Your association believes that they're going to be asked to work five extra days?
That is the perception.
Well, it's, can you tell them that that's not the perception? We're on camera right now publicly telling them it's not the perception.
I understand that. It's not just our perception, it would be what the town would perceive if we say that the last day of school is the 23rd.
Which it probably will be.
Be that as it may, it could be, it could be the 21st.
Right.
The perception would be that the teachers are then getting three extra days off with pay. So we are contracted to work 186 days.
Right.
So if you make a calendar that has 186 children days, which is what that would say if you put it on there for the 23rd. So I, there's, I understand that you do get phone calls every year from different people, and...
And we are, we're concerned about the setting of the graduation date, and we're concerned about all of our end-of-year, I apologize, for me, this is just a, it's been a little pet peeve, and the fact that we're into, it's January now, and we still can't agree on this thing, and now what we've done is essentially countermanded the exact information we were trying to share by obfuscating it, you know, making it more confusing than it was.
I actually think that the wording that's on there now is actually clearer. It's saying that it's projected, right now...
Current last day.
The current last day.
Current, this is 2016-17.
Right, that's, well, you can change the word current, but I mean, in terms of when we start school in August, the current last day is set for June 16th. As we go through the winter, things happen, then it would be...
That's how we do it now. So if, now if we say it's the 23rd, and all of a sudden, it's February, we haven't had a snow day, and these kids, they're like, maybe we're going to get out early.
They're going to get out early.
And then they get excited when there's no snow days, and I mean, I guess this is...
Right, but you're public, right, you are publicly publishing a calendar with 186 workdays, for student days.
This is a student...
Those are, it's 186 student days is the way it would be written if it was published with June 23rd.
But it includes five snow days built in.
Right.
We can't educate our educators, we have to make sure that the language of this...
I'm not just talking for educators, I'm also talking for general public.
The parents, the ones we were trying to communicate that they shouldn't be planning things for the 21st, because we might still be in school then, given snow days.
Right.
So given the intent of our effort, this is what, this is what the association and the administration thinks is the best way to communicate that.
Well, Nathan, I'd like to speak to that. In the collective bargaining agreement, the superintendent or the administrator is directed to work with the teachers and try to come up with a calendar. And we tried to make this change this year, and I think Joanne and I have met probably three or four times trying to do this. I don't think we're objecting to any days, any of the days here, we didn't change any of that, it's just the, just the language that we're struggling with. And yes, we didn't, Joanne and I tried to come together, and I think, you know, I guess I wasn't, I wasn't viewing it as you, I didn't think that the last proposal was out of bounds, but it may be, it may not accomplish, if, when you look at it, what you're trying to accomplish, so.
Yeah, it looks like this, it looks, to me...
We're in the summer there, it's all gray out, it's, no, it's...
Yeah, so if I say, if I look at my, this is me as a mom, I'm looking at my calendar, last day of school's on the 23rd. Okay, so I start planning my summer, and then, again, in March or April, somebody's like, "Ooh, we're going to get out early." Those are bonus days, or days I have to start planning for childcare. But at least I know from the 23rd until the first day of school, I know what my schedule is. I guess that's, that's the part I don't understand. If I look at the 16th as the last day of school, that's what I'm going to see, I don't, I'm not going to understand what the 23rd is.
So the motivation here, I mean...
Can I, can I back up? I didn't know there was such controversy over a calendar, but I, can somebody help me that has not heard these issues before, just explain, and like, I don't know anything about this? What are the concerns on both sides here?
So the concern is that there have been questions asked in past years. We get into way too deep into the spring, and we're still trying to set the date for graduation.
Okay.
But the calendar said that the end of school was going to be on the 16th, so we thought we were doing graduation on the 9th, for instance. But it's very clear, because we've already burned, we, the school.
Okay.
Students.
The administration, the pre-graduation, the seniors.
Okay.
And so there's a question, are we getting out on the 16th? Well, no, we've already burned through three or four snow days, and there's still a couple of months of winter potentially. We don't ever get out, and I say that very carefully, because it's an exaggeration, we don't ever get out of the stated last day. I didn't, we, multiples of us have talked about it, we didn't grow up looking at this thing, looking at a school calendar that told us we were getting out at the very earliest possible time. It told us the latest time that you should plan on being out, based upon what we reasonably expected, because we built in the fact that there might be reasonable snow days. Of course, I'm a kid from Maine, right, so maybe down here we don't have as many snow days, but we have in the last few years. The bigger concern was when we had parents who were complaining to the schools that they'd already made plans. "I have kids registered for camp, we're taking a jet flight, we're going on vacation, and we won't be there the last week of school, what are you guys doing?" The answer is, "We're making up for the snow days that we reasonably should have predicted, and so let's make a calendar that says we reasonably anticipate that we won't be getting out on the very earliest possible moment, we'll be later than that, please anticipate."
So on this, on this version, the 23rd is that day that tells people that no matter what happens, if we have 20 snow days, you're getting out on the 23rd?
No, there's the potential that if we have more than five snow days...
We go even further.
Then we would go even further.
I got you, okay.
But not beyond June 30th?
No.
That's, okay. And then, Joanne, what was...
Well, our, our point has been, is part of the issue is, is that when we start having snow days, we don't notify parents, and we, as a school board, it's never been in March saying, "By the way, we've had three snow days planned on the 19th now," or whatever. I mean, I think that's another way we can go. It had, I, I'm here.
We talked about it all last winter, we're like, "Wow, so now we burn three days, we burn four days, we have that bad weather."
Right.
Well, that's going to push off the end of school.
And as I remember, last year, there were, there was some discussion about teachers that had already taken a summer job, and now they wouldn't be able to take their summer job because we used, do you remember that?
Yeah.
So I think what we're...
But those discussions were happening in May.
Yeah, but I think, well, I think we had a, but what is, what we're trying to do is to say to teachers and everybody else in the world, our best guess is that we're going to use the snow days, that's why we have five of them. And that's our best guess, and if we're not going to have our five, we'll tell you we're going to have two more, and you won't get out on, I don't see the big deal.
No, I just wanted to try to communicate more effectively.
Right.
Except that, I mean, we were looking at this calendar in October, November, and we just keep going back to the same basic communication that we've had in previous years.
Another way to do it, a simple way to do it, is say, "Okay, we don't expect the five snow days, we'll expect 10. So we'll add those 10 days in, and that we're pretty sure is the last."
Well, and on this calendar, it would be, because that'd be 30 June, so.
June 1st, I know.
Yeah.
Yeah, I...
I mean, you know, obviously, the best, the best way to do it is that when we provide the calendar, we will put in big, bold letters, some additional message across the bottom, instead of trying to do it within, I just...
This, to me, is just the way it's published now.
Right, but the, you, you see the point that I'm, that I'm making, that...
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think there's an argument about the problem, it's just, do you want to tell them the worst case, middle case, or best case?
Well, then there's also the contractual point, that if you are saying there's five ex, there's five days added in, that's five added school days for teachers, whether they get utilized or not, because...
So if there's a snow day, then it doesn't include one of those days?
Yes, it would use it, obviously, but...
You're worried about the last five, you're worried about, so if we're looking at this...
Right, that's why it says 181 days after the June 16th?
I think on the...
Because the 181 is what the...
I think the second calendar that you got is colored acceptable to Joanne, it's the, it's the three, it's the three lines of notes to the right, outside the calendar, is, is, is the struggle. Because we didn't change any days, we just colored them a little different, and that's, that's, that's how you go, so.
Why don't you just put an asterisk next to the current last day and say, you know, if, if no snow days, hurricanes, whatever.
Spoilers.
Whatever, you know?
Just trying to make it simple.
And then people, making plans, they know that, you know, and if, and it runs to the 21st, and they booked the trip to Disney on the 19th, well, I guess they're going to miss two days, but it might not be any confusion. I don't know. You've seen more of these, Nate, than I have.
Yeah, it's all right, it was, it was an attempt at trying to solve a problem, but...
To simplify it.
We've, sadly, this is the way it goes, we're going to, we're not going to, so you can vote on either calendar, I'd just take a motion for whoever at this point.
All right, let's take a deep breath.
No, listen, it's such a small petty thing, you know what I mean? And the idea that we talked about a year ago that we could fix this has turned into really a three-month morass of, it's ridiculous, so.
Well, I do want to say, there was other issues with the calendar prior to, and those have been fixed, and that's one of the reasons it took time.
So are there other changes here that we should talk about from?
Not since, no, not since your other one.
No, this is the last time. In the early stretches of the...
Right.
So the administration and the association are agreed that the calendar just handed to us now is what they'd like to see for 16 and 17.
I make a motion to accept it.
A second.
I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Ms. Shelton, any more discussion?
Not till next year.
Not till next year, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. Okay, with that, we have to talk about the warrant. So I know that there was a version of it in the packet, and I'm working to find it, just a sec. There it is. We can, at a subsequent, at a subsequent meeting, whenever, we can take votes, for instance, to recommend, we have a public hearing that's scheduled for Monday night, a public hearing on the budget, but really, by statute, at that public hearing, we got to declare and notice the public about all appropriations, all spending articles, right? So any money. And you can't, you can reduce that number before you actually post it on the townhouse wall and go to the deliberative session and off the ballot, you can reduce that number, but you can't raise it. Because if you were to raise it, then you actually need to notice the public of a bigger appropriation or more planned spending. So the pressure that's on is that anything that might spend money has to be something we agree to push forward to the public hearing on Thursday to the Budget Committee. And I want to make sure we say publicly to the Budget Committee that we've, it's already a really tight timeline, because they don't get a chance to look at this and talk about it until the public hearing, right? So, so the first article on the, on the, on the warrant, after the... Officers? Yeah.
One more time.
Yep. So Monday night, this coming, the 11th. Where?
Auditorium.
In the auditorium?
7:00 P.M.
Downstairs, at 7:00 P.M.? The Budget Committee, the municipal Budget Committee, is hosting or holding a public hearing on the budget. Our budget, because they already did the towns, right, in December, back a month, so, and they'll go through all of our money articles, essentially, for public consumption and for information. Later, a week or so later, a week and a half later, is the posting deadline, when this has to be put up on the wall and townhouse, you know, it has to be final and then posted.
So 18th or so.
Yeah, it's the, I don't know what the date is, it's, it's actually the last Monday, last Monday in January is the statute.
The 25th.
Right, so, 20 something.
20, 25th. 25th.
On Saturday, the 30th of January, is the deliberative session, which is the opportunity that exists for the community to come together and consider that warrant and finalize what the language will be when it goes to the ballot. The public hearing ought to be the opportunity to really dig in and ask questions and figure out the details of it. The deliberative session is intended to be an opportunity to fix the language. I don't like that number, I want it to be different, you know, the purpose doesn't really describe it effectively, it's, you know, and that's when the lawyers get all right to start talking about the... But the deliberative session has to judge what the language will be when they print the ballot, and that's what we vote on in March. Voting day this year is the March 8th. It's a Tuesday, always the second Tuesday. So, so for us, for us tonight, Article 1 is actually those officers that are up for election, moderator, clerk, district treasurer, each for one year, and two board seats for three-year term. Article 2, in this case, is our operating budget. We've already, we've already talked about that and agreed to that number, we've moved it forward to the Budget Committee. Ultimately, the number will be the Budget Committee's number, we've agreed to the default number, which is included there.
Question mark after 16 million.
Because the Budget Committee hasn't yet voted the number, I don't think, the number that they want to put there. But presumably, Monday night, they will be talking about the highest possible number that they might agree to, and if they decide ultimately, before it posts, to change it, they can, they just have to go down, not up. So I don't think there's any questions about Article 2. Article 3 is, is, again, the language is statutorily prescribed, that's the article that supports the collective bargaining agreement between the board and the Teachers Association, and it, it estimates the costs related to that agreement for all of the three years that are in the agreement, and then it raises, it seeks to raise the amount needed for the first year. I don't think there's any questions there, that's, we've seen that language, and we have ratified the tentative agreement with the association. Article 4 that follows that is another statutory article that creates the opportunity, if Article 3, if the Teacher Association Collective Bargaining Agreement fails to pass, and you don't do anything else, then they would simply be without a successor agreement, and they would be in a, like, a stay-put, and they would be using the existing terms of the expired contract, but there'd be no pay increases, none of, no other changes, right? Article 4 gives, the language says, "Shall the school district, if Article 3 is defeated, authorize the governing body to call one special meeting at its option to address Article 3 cost items only." The interpretation of that is, it allows us to renegotiate with the association, come up with new costs, new terms, and hold a special election to vote on that. We don't have to put that on, but it seems consistent with our goal to make sure that we, we do the best we can for our association and our teachers, and if the community doesn't think we did well enough with Article 3, we want to go swing at it again. So I think we're all good with Article 4?
Yes.
Article 5 speaks to the land swap, I guess we've been calling it, behind the elementary school with, may I say the, it doesn't say so here, but can I, is it the association? Can I name it?
Darrell Woods.
The Darrell Woods Association?
Yeah.
I, for public consumption, I guess I should read, "Shall the school district vote "Shall the school district vote to authorize the school board to convey a portion of the district's land behind the elementary school and to accept in exchange a conveyance of land to the school district, of land in the same general area, all on such terms and conditions as the school board determine are in the best interest of the district, and further to authorize the school board to take any other action necessary to carry out this vote?" That's not a money article, because we're not talking about an exchange of dollars. Mike, you've talked about it a couple of times, you know, but you want to recap it, maybe?
Yeah, the concept involves, the school currently owns land along Darrell Drive. As you come into the school entrance, that's swampland, it's wetland. There is land directly behind the elementary school, which abuts that, which could be of use to the school, potentially down the road for, you know, expanding access road or whatnot. There is a willingness on that, by the Darrell Woods Association, to swap our, I guess, wetlands for that usable land. And it doesn't cost the district anything. And it's really a good move and it allows for more options down the road, because there's not really any other way to go, other than the next warrant article. We'll talk about the McGrath property.
Yep. Okay. Is there consensus, and I'm not taking votes, but I think we can, on the 21st, maybe, after we've had the value of our public conversation, on the 21st at our meeting, we should formally vote to recommend each article? And if we wanted to make any changes in language, we could do it at that point, it having already been heard and commented on by our public, okay? So right now, I'm looking for consensus that that's good. We'll go ahead and leave Article 5 there.
Yep.
Okay, so Article 6, we are looking at another piece of property that has become available, and we've been talking about it in on public, to some extent, over the last few months. And we do not have, we do not have anything signed right now on this piece of property. We're still working on it. So, but I think we're talking about going to a public hearing for Monday. So I think it's reasonable enough at this point. We are engaged with the owners of the property and talking about it. So to the extent that, you know, without talking about the money, and I think we'll skip the money conversation right now, because that's really what we're arguing about, there's another piece of property. You want to speak to that?
Yeah, sure, Nate.
McGrath, next door?
It's the, the McGrath property runs essentially parallel to the playground area. And it's, there's still a for sale sign out, so people can get a visual of it. It basically runs from the road, you know, back, actually beyond where the back of the school is now. Dr. Joyce recommended in his recent report that the school, you know, looks, if any land comes open abutting the schools, that they look at purchasing that. That's exactly what this is. Also, Ingrid Nichols recommended, the architect, that the school acquire this, because it could potentially allow an access road around the back of the school. And if ultimately that's not put in, it could also, it allows us to move the access road so we don't have a school, road, and then playground, which isn't ideal, okay? So, and these opportunities may not come up again, because if that property's put to another use, then, you know, it's unlikely that we're gonna buy it for the price we're looking at now. So that's what that's about, and what use it's put to will need to be determined. But we may not have this opportunity again, so...
So we have a trust fund that is, by definition, it's actually, I think it's a... Well, I keep saying that it's not. Is it a, yeah, it's a capital reserve fund. It's the Expansion of Schools Trust Fund. And it has a balance right now of just under $71,400. And so the language of the article as it's written asks the district to vote to raise and appropriate the total amount of the purchase, which we're still negotiating, for expansion of school facilities at the elementary school, and authorize the withdrawal of an amount of money, not all of it, because we don't seek to close the trust, but reasonably all of the available dollars, offsetting that cost and bringing down the tax impact cost of what that property might be. So that would be Article Number 6 right now.
And can we discuss the wording of it here, is that? I just noticed some, like, you know, where in the second line it reads, well, first of all, as a voter, I would want to know, you know, if they're not in tune with this issue, what this property's all about.
Mm-hmm.
I might describe it as, you know, purchase of abutting land, land abutting the elementary school property located at 239 South Main Street.
Who's helped us with this? Is this Gordon?
Gordon, yes.
This is Gordon.
So let's go back. I mean, I think Gordon would appreciate that feedback, and he can help us. So purchase of land located at that address, which abuts or that abuts?
Yeah, the elementary school.
The elementary school.
And then the wording, "expansion of school facilities," well, that, I don't think that accurately describes. We don't know precisely what we're gonna do to it. Doesn't, you know, when you read "expansion of school facilities," it suggests that you're, you know...
Building.
And what he's doing in that case is he's echoing the title of the fund that was created in March of '62.
Yep.
But I don't know that we have to use that specific language, so let's ask him.
That was me.
That was you?
Because I didn't know what the initial, I didn't know what the specific purpose was, so I just put in...
I just used the, you know, the sort of the use for Newmarket Elementary, you know, the elementary school's use.
Correct.
Yeah. And then, you know, the rest of it, the rest of it reads fine to me.
So from the address through to the word "school" of Newmarket Elementary, let's see if we can get Gordon's assistance in drafting something that reminds us that it abuts.
And that's really the whole idea behind this, we...
Yes, absolutely.
You can't find any other abutting properties.
That's right. Okay. Consensus there? Any other questions or thoughts? Okay. Articles, that's Article 6. Article 7, then, is the last article, the last money article, other than, you know, the housekeeping article. I've got some reservations already. I know we've talked about this a little bit in the past. It's our intent to find a mechanism to raise some dollars, and in this case, raise it from fund balance. So not raise additional dollars, but reserve some of the fund balance to support some of what we may do ongoing with the facilities committee, with Ingrid and Banwell and our architect, with a cost estimator, for instance. We have made the decision not to put a bond article on. We're not talking about raising the architect and engineering fees for the final design. We're not talking about spending any, anything like the million-dollar-plus that we had been talking about. But we do want to make sure that we have funds to support finishing the effort enough to get us to a point where we could be, we could be explaining to the voters for next year what it is we propose, based upon all of the public feedback and all of the work the facilities committee and the board will do in support of them over the next three, four, five months. And so what we talked about was, following along the CIP model of saving, taking dollars and saving them and using the trust funds, we talked about putting some element of the trust, of the fund balance, in a trust. And the dual purpose seemed to be appropriate for that, except, and I don't, I don't have the language. Do you have the language in the computer that you could pull up? The specific language of the dual-purpose trust?
It's on the back of that.
I don't have, I don't have the back of that one.
Okay, I'm sorry.
But here's the title, the title of the fund. We call it the Dual-Purpose Fund, right? But here's the title that was created when they created the fund in 2012. Did we really just create that in 2012?
We did. I have all the years now on them, so if you ever want to know the year.
It's called the, which is so salacious, you know what I mean? Like, you don't read it. Like, you and I are looking at it, but I need to read this aloud. It's called the Construction of a New School Building and Renovation of Existing School Buildings for Fire and Life Safety Code Compliance Capital Reserve Fund.
My God.
Which says way too much in and above itself, because that's not necessarily any of that, certainly not all of it, and maybe not any of it necessarily, is exactly what we're talking about. But what we drafted was, take $100,000 out of the fund balance and put it in the trust fund, so that if we had need for additional engineering, excuse me, architectural engineering work or cost estimating, that we would have funds available to do that.
So you want to know the purpose?
And we would be telling the community that that's what we wanted it for, and how we, you know? So what's the purpose?
The purpose is a construction of a new school building and renovations of existing building for fire and life safety code compliance. So we've, in the past, have used that for A&E and things of that nature, consultants.
We have used it.
We have, yeah.
That's the trust fund into which we've put the dollars that did the elevator and all the fire and life safety work that's been done already.
Mike, I think we've talked about it. My problem is, if I read this, it says to me, "We want $100,000 to build a new school or to renovate one or to take care of fire and life safety issues." So my reaction is, number one, I thought we already took care of fire and life safety issues, which we did.
Right.
Why are you reaching the conclusion we're gonna build a new school or renovate? So I would vote no. If, on the other hand, you said, "We are gonna use these funds to further the progress on the development of the alternatives for $100,000," I would be supportive of that.
So it's really the only trust fund that serves that purpose.
Can we define, can we put in parentheses after that gibberly-gook to be used for...
Yeah. I think we can add a purpose phrase of our own, as so long as that purpose phrase was reasonably categorically consistent with some part of the initial purpose.
But it sounds like it wasn't.
Well, I mean, you, well, I mean, what you're doing, what you'd be using it for is potentially synonymous with either constructing a new building or renovating an existing building.
I got you. That's right.
And so, I mean, because it's the beginning steps of either one of those projects, which... But I think what you couldn't say is, for the purpose of erecting a cupola on top of the... Because that's not consistent. Even if you told them that's what the purpose was, you shouldn't be able to use the trust fund in that way. The question, I guess, that we need to ask is, is this a fool's errand? If we, if we put in that language and say, whatever language you just choose, for the purpose of supporting the continued facilities effort to decide what to do? Will that help, or is it lost because of this lengthy title that is already there? Because we can't take that out. That's statutory. I mean, that's the language that, I mean, that's the title that we created it with it. We'd have to, we could change it, we could change it with the warrant article, but then we're talking about, you know, now we're changing the language of the...
So you're, we're worried about just perception?
I want it to pass. I'm worried about perception, yeah.
So do we go to the Budget Committee with it and just see what they, what they say?
Go to the public hearing. I mean, that's a good chance. We can, you know, we could certainly change it. Can I? We could pull it. We could do less. So we could pull the article after the public hearing. We could cut it right off the line if you wanted.
I think we need the money to move ahead, because we can't sit here for six or seven months doing nothing.
Right.
So we need to do as good a job as we can explaining the predicament. If we fail, we fail. But I, I think we, I don't know how you do it.
You could create a new expendable trust fund for exactly the purpose that Al explained.
And appropriate from the fund balance in certain amount.
You could just create a new account and not tie it to this one, because it's creating some confusion. I think that requires two warrant articles, one to create the fund and one to fund it.
Okay, so we should ask.
But I think we could find that out from...
Want to create it and...
That's just one other way.
Or can you say, "Create a trust fund and appropriate in the same article"?
Yeah, yeah.
And then it could be, then it would be specific and more...
Yeah. Because we need it. We need to do it, yeah. We want to communicate, I'm not sure that this communicates it in a clear and concise way that's fair to the voters.
No.
Or fair to the process, because if we really think we need to do it and we want to do it, we want them to have the opportunity to not be, you know, clobbered by the, you know, by the... There's a lot of history that goes along with that, right? We don't want to hearken back to that, so...
Well, and Al's answering honestly. I mean, he's gonna tell you, this, I would have looked at this and voted no.
I think, to clarify, I think Al would vote for it. He's just saying that the voter, Joe voter who comes in.
The way he's reading it, I get what he's saying.
So why don't we draft that? Why don't we draft the article, a language, to create a new trust for that purpose?
And leave this money alone?
And leave this one alone.
I think it's very...
Because it did what it needed to do. It did the fire and life safety. We put all the money in.
It's not a lot of money.
It's not, so...
And it can be worded in an informative way, so it publicly understands that it's, no choice has been made, that, you know, the public input's key and that the school board is, you know, the trustee of these funds. And, you know, it doesn't mean they'll be spent, and it means that we'll take good care to spend them wisely.
Right. So... Okay, so public hearing? Can't raise the number if you decide you needed more after the fact without having another public hearing. Is $100,000 an appropriate number for us to start at? Or do you want to start with a higher number, go to the public hearing, and then choose to leave it or lower it? Or find out if you have the Budget Committee's support?
Yeah, and hearing back from Ingrid, she said, "Range it between 100 and 150 should get us to our, all of our pre-bond needs."
Then let's fund it appropriately.
As a mayor, civil engineer, if need be, and any other consultants.
We're gonna have to educate, right? So we're gonna have to list out why we think we want that and how we think it might be spent, if we spend it. So will you make it 150? And will you speak to Gordon and see if you can't get us an article drafted that can be part of the public hearing for the Budget Committee Monday night? And I guess what I would say is...
And I think, let's have Gordon email copies around. And we need to get members on the board to look at that, to make sure it's...
Yeah, I don't think it's, I mean, it's raise and appropriate, or whatever it is, $150,000 to continue...
From the surplus, yeah.
To continue our progress in making a determination as to what road we take relative to, you know? And I gotta believe people would support that.
Pre-bond, facilities, pre-bond.
So the title is gonna be for, to make sure that we cover for A&E?
No. That would be like a million. This is, this is just pre-bond.
You want it that specific?
No, no, but I'm...
I know that, that's what I'm trying, give me what you want.
That facility's...
If that's what it's gonna be called, whatever, when we establish it, that's what it's gonna be called, and then I gotta state the purpose. So I want to make sure that I leave it broad enough that you have...
You know, let's get the language, and we can think of the magic words, but we've got the ideas.
We know, yeah.
Yeah.
I think continuing ought to be in there somewhere.
Okay.
And you may even want to end it in order to meet, I mean, why are we doing it? We're doing it so we can meet an end date.
Right.
And I forget what that end date is. Is it for the final warrant for the school?
Up to next year?
Yeah.
Yeah, next March.
And I think that's what we need to, should be in there, in order to, you know, meet our expectation of presenting a warrant article.
And explaining what it is.
Exactly.
So we can continue with the work.
Yep, yeah. All right, so that will be there as Article Number 7. However, that language can come about. We have taken out of our drafts any of the language that would have moved dollars... I'm sorry to those that are at home. I'm sitting back. It's late night, and I'm pulling away from the microphone.
They're probably okay with that.
They might be okay with it. I know some people are not. We draft, we took all the others out, right? We didn't want to muddy the waters. At the time, we took them all out, we were thinking about a bond article, maybe, is there... I mean, I think that our, I think that our sense is probably the same. The others have enough funds in it to take care of the potential things that might come? We're not looking at, we're not looking at dollars related to technology, because we think we've got enough in that fund? So are there any other articles that the board thinks should be considered for the warrant?
Just based on what we learned tonight, should we put a warrant article for security purposes?
Great question.
I mean, I will be honest to the, you know, we don't, it was a pretty scary conversation. And I would like to see something put on there.
But if we, can I say it differently? If we don't have a warrant article, is there any other way in which we could pay this immediate security needs?
Because wasn't there talk before about a trust fund that can be utilized for that? Expedite, to get it done as quickly as possible?
Yeah, okay.
So we do have...
You can use the repair and maintenance.
The repair and maintenance fund could...
How much is in there?
180, 200 and...
84, I think. It was just in there. Hold on a minute.
That should be, that should be plenty.
284, yeah.
Do you think of the article to put money back in?
Next.
So that we can continue?
I don't know.
Or saving up for the next security thing, like on CIP?
So, yeah, so those are things that need to be done. I would hate to have an article rejected and we're stuck with a no, gives no debate.
Yeah, I mean, I think we go ahead and do, we put some dollars in there that I think will cover the boiler conversation we thought we might have. Depending on the timing of moving forward with some facilities solution, some of that may wait. There may be redundancy, you know, we may... So I don't know that we have to go ahead and put money in there right now. I think what we might want to do is, this time next year...
Refill it.
We might want to refill it, depending on what we decided we had to spend on the security upgrades. We may, so that's what I agree.
Because it might be part of another conversation.
Right.
Yeah.
And these are not, we don't know, we just talked tonight, but these, it's nothing that's gonna shock anybody in terms of cost.
Right.
It's just stuff we need, that we've been perhaps a little delinquent on doing.
Anything else, then, for the conversation of warrant? All right, then that's what we will have with us as we move to the public hearing on Monday night, 7 o'clock in the auditorium. Was there, we talked about the land swap article. Was there action that was needed at this point on that? Are we okay to move forward with the warrant?
I think we're okay.
We don't need anything else with the land swap. That's okay for right now?
Fine.
Okay.
The intent is to swap, and I think that's...
So I don't have your recommendations, but you want to do that later?
We'll do that next, thanks, two weeks ago. We'll do that next, well, thanks, two weeks ago.
So you're okay with them going in empty to the public hearing?
Yeah.
I mean, you know what? We did that, yeah.
Yep. I think so. We're, I think that shows, Christine's asking, the language that, down below that says recommended by, won't say recommended by us, by any vote or anything yet, because we're waiting on the public's feedback. Okay? I'll make basic, some brief comments, I guess, and, and then you guys can chime in. Superintendent Search, we had the day in the district yesterday where two finalists, Julie Kuchenberger and Meredith Nato, were in the district from first thing in the morning straight through until eight o'clock last night. And the public, public should know that they had a chance to tour the buildings, they met with administration, they met with student groups, they were in and out of classrooms, they met with faculty, they met with the SAU staff and community leaders here in Town Hall, they dined in our community, and were, and met with members of the public who joined us last night for a public session at the junior senior high school. And the board met in, on public session afterward last night, and we will meet again tonight to finalize our deliberation. I think I can, I can voice the comment that was shared multiple times by people with many of the board members throughout the day and into the evening, that the process has been a very successful one, because we were blessed with two outstanding finalists, two outstanding candidates, either of whom would reasonably make a very good superintendent of schools for Newmarket, and, and predictably lead us powerfully into the coming years. It, I think is our goal to engage one of those candidates and, and negotiate final terms such that we could make an announcement the beginning of the week. But we weren't able to finalize that tonight or today, and so we're working on that one more time tonight. There are so many thanks, I think, that could be shared by the board with members of the community who contributed to the effort yesterday, and certainly to our school leaders who were involved, and all of the staff and students who participated. You just can't, you can't imagine the, well, you can. Some of you certainly can imagine the pride that we all felt as we witnessed the, the questions and answers, the commentary and observations made by our staff, and our students especially, in both of our buildings, both of our schools. And I know that both candidates walked away, because they said so, enthusiastic about the opportunity to be involved with such an outstanding community of, of educators and learners. So, anything else that we don't want to miss, that we should tell the public so that they could be anticipating? I, I, I'm regretful, I'm sorry, that we aren't able to make a public announcement tonight, because I think that would have been a really timely thing, and, but we're doing our best to continue to, to see this process through and do it right. And so we don't have an announcement tonight, but soon. Anything else?
I'm just excited for the future.
Yeah. Remember that the superintendent hired would start July first formally, but we certainly expect that the superintendent-elect would become involved almost immediately in helping to chart the course and prepare transition and start working towards July, so. Okay?
Yeah, I'm going to say, because this was the best part of the day.
Yeah.
Was sitting with the students. And so as community, community members and parents, we should be so proud of those kids.
Absolutely.
Articulate, asking questions to a prof, to professional people and just eye contact, and it was just, it was, it just makes you so, gets you goosebumps to be in there, because they were just really, and they're so polite. They open up doors, even some when they shouldn't open up doors. But they're, it was, it was a nice day. That was the best part of the day with the kids.
Thank you to the board members as well, for the time and energy spent, but, you know, shepherding and participating in all of that day, so. Okay. Mike, facilities. I know you folks have just continued to hurdle forward.
Yeah, we're moving along. We haven't met since, we took a little, little break, I guess.
Much deserved.
Over the holidays, so we didn't meet during the last couple of weeks. Scheduled to meet again next Wednesday. And we're working on the, we, at our last meeting, we went over a draft of the educational specifications for both schools, with the principals there. We need to, we need to do some more work on those. It's, as is typical, in a draft, it's not the end. Ultimately, and we're getting, we're having Ingrid's giving her input on these. She's seen a lot of ed specs in her, in her career. And, and part of the challenge is, is that, is, is developing, if so, they meet all the needs of the schools, economically so, but also that we're adequately communicating to the public, you know, what, what they, what the needs are. And it, and that's, and I think that's, that's, that's a big challenge, and, but it, it's critical. People know, have to know what they're buying, and they have to know what the uses are. It's not enough to list things out and, and leave it at that. And that's, and that ultimately is going to be our responsibility as a school board, because we're going to be the ones that are going to have to, you know, eventually, not too long, check off on those and, and review them with a, with a, with a sharp pencil. So we can look at people with a straight face, we can look at the staff and the administration with a straight face, and saying, this is, we believe in everything you need, and also the community, that, you know, we're not putting things in here that are, are, you know, unnecessary. And the word need is a charged term. It means different things to different people. There'll be some things on the ed specs that may not wind up in a final design, but that's for, for us to have that debate, and that's for the public to get input on, because you don't want to have a whole project, a very necessary project hamstrung by a lack of communication, or by putting something in there that this is not going to get public support, that may, may be able to be carved out. So that's, this is, to me, instinctually, this is the most critical part of this whole process, is getting this, this, this right. Because if, if you can explain clearly to people, and I thought Dr. Joyce really did that, you know, I haven't heard a lot of objection or to, you know, to Dr., anything Dr. Joyce said in terms of, of needs. We need to do the same thing with the ed specs. So, that's, that's all I have on facilities.
If I, if I could just add a minute, when I got on the, on the board here, I wasn't even sure what ed specs meant. And I think it's important for people in the community to understand what they, what ed specs do mean. And to me, at least, what they mean is taking the program that's going to be presented and providing enough resources to present it. Which means, if you're going to have a, if we, we as a school board decide that welding is a program that we want to provide to our students, then we need to provide adequate space to do that. There's been a lot of questions, I think, about the sizes of rooms that we need to present, to fill those ed specs that we need to provide them. And I would really hope that people, rather than, and I know it's a big, it's a big thing to ask, but please, before you make decisions about what we need or what we don't need, it's necessary for you to read the Joyce report. It is absolutely necessary, because if you haven't read that, you don't have the information that's necessary to make a good decision. And I, it, it, I, I think the, we're getting to a point now where we've got some real information that's really real, and it's really realistic, and that Dr. Joyce report, it won't take you that long to go through it, but it really gets you, your head in the right place in terms of, of resources. So for a citizen to make a decision, we don't need a ninety-five thousand doll, a ninety-five thousand square foot building without reading those ed specs is kind of, I, I hate to say it, it's uninformed.
Well, in, in, I, I agree, but, but to be, that's, I guess, people, people in general, I, I don't think are, are as tuned to these issues as we are, and we just need to keep remembering that. And to me, it's not only our responsibility to come to, to get the right data, get the ed specs done up, and get them done right. That's only half of the thing. If we're not doing our job, if we're not communicating it, because it'll, it, you can have sound ed specs, but if people don't know that, and especially given the history we have to be realistic about in this town, of maybe some skepticism, maybe some suspicion, it's not enough for us to say, we got it right. We got to go out and, it'll involve, it'll involve more sessions like Al and I did, it'll involve, and, and, let me give, let me tie this into the superintendent search. When I call various references of, of, of the finalists, and I got off, off track a little bit with one superintendent in a big school system in mass, and talking to me, how'd you get your building built? Well, I got up every Saturday morning, starting in July, and went door to door, and knocked on doors. And, you know, I'm not saying that that's necessarily our model, but it, it, it sounds self-evident, but it, it just, you know, I'm, I'm, we've got to be realistic about, we need, we need a, a, an all-hands-on-board plan to get the word out, or else our, our, all our work is sort of a for nod. So I just want to, you know, get that mindset out there, that, you know, once we get these formed up, we really need to hit the, hit the pavement, so to speak. And, and there are multiple ways to do that. There are social media, there are the small sessions, there are, are going out and meeting with groups. But you aren't going to get a successful project passed if you don't get buy-in on the program. You know, you can.
But, but at the same time, I think this is an effort that the public really needs to put into this, because, and this may be blasphemous, but unlike in the past, we're not going to present a finished product for them to accept and not to accept. We're going to present to them alternatives, which requires some study. Do we have an auditorium, or don't we? You know, those, those have to be thought, thought through. So I think, I, I agree with you, Mike, that we need to do a really good job selling it. I also think that people need to take the time, because it's, it's, it's time we get this thing done, and it's going to require some work on the part of the citizenry.
Yeah, absolutely.
To, to read the stuff that we've gotten prepared.
Yeah. And I, and I see our job as just laying it out there, getting, getting the facts, at least initially, and then, you know, it, it's, it's a partnership. People need to pay attention, and they need to help, but we need, we need to provide those opportunities, too, realistically, to get people in, so.
I, and I will say that we've had this in the past. We had a really great grassroots opportunity, and people jumped on board. What we have to do is make sure that there's not the he said, she said. We have to make sure there's not people attacking certain groups. How, so how are you going to get everybody involved and make sure that we don't have that split again? It's going to be hard, obviously.
Yeah.
But I just don't want it to be as contentious.
Yeah, I'm not in the guarantee business, but, so you can't make those guarantees. But what I say is, the approach is, 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 as I've said it before, is that the paradigm's fundamentally different. It's not us in a back room, when I say us, the school board and superintendent who comes on board, coming up with a design and saying, here you go. It's, 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 it's public input all the way, and it, and it's, and it's getting, it's simply getting facts out there. There will be advocacy groups likely, and there always are in these types of things, that come up. I mean, we can't control that. The, what we can control is doing our best job, you know, getting appropriate funds to do what we need to do, do our due diligence, and, and getting, getting the word out there. That's all we can do. But, but I, I'm just, I'm trying to emphasize that it's not enough just to do the due diligence. If you just do it and let it, and, 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 and put an announcement for, you know, one or two meetings that, you know, you know, think of our experience with a superintendent search. We advertised a public meeting, we had four people show up. The superintendent search is, is perhaps one of the most important things that district, district, district faces. So we need to be realistic, we need to think out of the box. I, I thought our sessions out were extremely effective, because it's small.
Yeah.
They're not, you know, they're not on camera, people aren't worried about, you know, big group sessions. That's what it's going to take.
I, well, that's what I was going to say. That was a really good start, so.
Yeah.
And that's going to get us the buy-in. So that's probably one of the things we're going to have to start doing.
I think one of the things that was missing maybe the last time was the curricular focus of the piece of everything, and where does this building bill, is, fall into the vision of what's going to happen with the schools? And so I think that's the thing we need to do with the future superintendent, to help them, help us, come together and determine what the vision is, and how it corresponds with, with the needs of the facilities do, with the ed specs and programming and all those things.
I think we also, we keep referring to this meetings that Mike and I had, and Nate, you and I have talked about it a bit. We, we had those meetings, Mike and I had those meetings because we were the newbies. Well, we're still the newbies. No, you are. But we talked about taking a, that was a very disso, disassociated group of people. I mean, it was, we picked.
From all, all.
And I've still got that list. And I think maybe what we ought to do, and I, it was really Nate's suggestion, is we ought to pair up, not Nate and I, not Mike and I this time, because we're not, but, but pair up, maybe two of us, and split up these groups, and say, how we doing?
Do it again.
How we doing?
And maybe mix the groups up.
Oh, I think, yeah.
Don't put people back in the same settings or the same groups, you know, change that.
Yeah, we had four, Mike.
Yeah.
And we don't need.
I don't want to exclude anybody, so we can open them up, you know, really to anybody. I mean, they, I think it's more effective if you're having small groups, and you could do multiples of those, but, but I think that's, that's one of many things we need to think about, of effective ways of getting the word out. And the reality is, you won't get everybody, I mean, they're, I don't know what the percentages are, but maybe Andy Smith could tell us how many percentages of voters will come up, no matter what you do, and it's not going to be.
Right.
But what can you do? You can only, you can only do what's in your control, so. But I just, I don't want to, I don't want to get into the weeds of how we're going to do that here tonight, but what I'm just saying is that it's just, we, the facilities committee and the board can do, we can have the, the perfect design and the perfect approach, and it means nothing if we don't get it.
Well, I, I know you don't want to get lost in the weeds. The nice thing is hearing that, that superintendent from Haverhill saying, we went and knocked on doors. Wouldn't it be nice at this time when we all knock on doors? You're greeted with, I already know that. I, I'm going to be there to vote.
Yeah.
That would be the positive.
Yeah, and, and I think, I think a distinction, too, is that, you know, in these sessions, there's less advocacy than there is, these are the facts, you know, at least initially, and, you know, this is what we've gathered up, these are the issues, this is what our experts have told us. You know, what are your thoughts? You know?
And it needs to be, I still hear every day, well, what are you guys going to do? Is it a new school or renovation? I tell them honestly, I haven't got a clue. But I think the, I, I, I'm just echoing what, what we're saying over again, but I think small groups where you can send them out as, as emissaries into the community and say, well, this is what I heard at the meeting the other day, would be really helpful. So with, with your support, I think we ought to plan to initiate those.
I think sooner than later, we need to do that, because part of what we need right now is not to be selling anything, it needs to be checking back and saying.
How it's building.
Because I think one of the things we've shared that it's a concern is, people that we thought were paying attention and had been, or not thought, people who we knew had been paying attention and knew were engaged at one point, who were a part of that hundred we talked about, you know, every time you do it, the same hundred, hundred fifty people that will come out, some of them weren't engaged, because they were, we got feedback that will come out, some of them weren't engaged, because they were, we got feedback that they didn't know what was happening, and I think it caught some of us off guard. Wow, really? Like, I, I'd have thought that person would have been completely clued in, and now they're not, and if they're not, that just took a whole chunk of the nine thousand who clearly aren't. You know, by extension, we need to go back and just check in and see what they do here, what they do think, what they do know, and, and make sure we, we use that to make sure we, we keep moving in the right direction with our communication. I think we feel like we're, we're turning over the stones as best we can and continue to move forward.
Right.
But how are we communicating that and sharing that with the community?
Well, if you would like, I'll put together that list of, it was forty or fifty people, Mike? Or was it more than that?
I, I, I don't re...
I know, there's a lot.
Sounds about right, but, yeah.
And, and get that list out to you folks.
If we started to tackle that, if we paired up, we started to do something creative, even if we just did, you know, one, 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 however we tackle it, it would not be unthinkable to get started, because the other thing that would help is, we just get done talking about a warrant.
Yeah.
And some of those same people will have questions about that.
Yeah.
We wanna make sure we get their feedback about the facilities conversation, but why not, why not be, you know, you know, uh, communicating as best we can above the other things happening in the district as well?
I'd be glad to take that on, and I'll just, I'll send to you folks the lists and some ideas as to how, and some schedules, and...
Let's do it.
The last time we did it, by the way, we invited people to ask other people to come with them. Um, so, okay, great.
I'm gonna have to get up really early for this, aren't I? It's five o'clock coffee hour.
We did, we did, we did eight, I think we did eight to nine, isn't that what we did?
Yeah, and I think that was, I think that was a good time, cause people are fresh and they're not, you know...
And it was an hour.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so...
Anything else under facilities?
No, nope.
Um, I'd like to table the first policy, video and audio surveillance. That is the one that needs a public hearing, and, and we did not, because of the conversation we had with the PD earlier, we didn't do that today. So I'd, I'd ask you to table that one, but I would invite the board to contemplate the second and final read on the other three policies. Again, there were statutes that changed, you see the reference on the first one, EHAA, computer security, email and internet communications, that speak to personal privacy as defined in the new RSA 18968A. And so, our process is a first read and a second read before changes take effect. This was predict, this was proposed to us by the School Boards Association to reflect the legal requirements. I'd seek a motion to accept, um, as, to accept the revisions to policy EHAA.
So moved.
There you go.
A motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Ms. McKinney, is there any more discussion on that policy? All, hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We unanimous? The same, same, RSA 18965 and 67 were reflected with changes on our very simple policy, GBJ personnel records. Seek a motion to accept those revisions as proposed.
So moved.
I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Zink. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We unanimous? The last then is administering medication to students. There was a new statute, RSA 240-b, which spoke to injections of glucagen. That has been referenced, uh, in our policy, consistent with epinephrine and the others that were already, this is policy JLCD, administering medication to students. I seek a motion to approve that as revised.
So moved.
I have a motion from Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. Shelton. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. Thanks, folks. So on the, on the agenda for next time, we'll ask for a public hearing at the beginning of our meeting, to discuss any of the terms related to video and audio surveillance. I'll ask the administration maybe to offer any commentary that they've got at that public hearing, and then it'll be an opportunity, according to statute, for the public to speak to it. And really, again, all of that policy is speaking to or talking to, it was a response to, among other things, the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation talking about videotaping instruction in classrooms to help teachers see what they do. But there was a, a, a response nationally about, um, student privacy and teacher privacy, because there was concerns about where the videos might go, on whose hands they might end up in, and how they might be used. So this, this policy now speaks to the privacy matters related to that. So we'll put that on next year's, next month's agenda, or next, next time's agenda, excuse me. I'd ask the superintendent to comment, uh, under correspondence about food service.
Yes, um, food service, like a number of other organizations such as FIRE, um, come into our building, health, health come into our building to check various programs and services. There's also auditing of federal funds. And in the packet, you will find, uh, the fact that the state did the food service program, and there were no findings requiring plans or of corrective action. And that's, uh, and, and I wanna thank Linda Hopie, our food service director, for making that happen, and I wanted the board to know that, um, that, uh, that's a good report. And it's, uh, it's not, it's not a surprise that we're evaluated, or that's just standard practice, that various things that we do get, have outside eyes come and look at them. And we did, we did fine.
Um, just, just a information question, Mike. Attached to that, was it, it looked like something from a Hennecker Community School? Is that supposed to be an example of something, or?
Where, where was that, Michael?
Um, just...
You know, it was the second page. And it actually, this is the department's mistake.
Oh, okay.
She, if you look down...
Oh, I see.
If you look in the language, it all says SU thirty-one, but she didn't change her header.
Okay.
That was just, that's funny. They do that, I mean, they do these administrative views all over the state, all year long.
I got you, yeah, okay.
It was a... Our congratulations to Linda. Uh, as many years as I've been doing it, folks, I'll tell you, I have only once or twice seen a completely clean report like this coming out of food service. There's always, it, it's like your internal audit, you know, your independent audit, you pay them to come and find things to help make it better. So if the department has come down and done an administrative view and really found nothing, that's not for slack of trying. They worked hard at it. So congratulations to Linda. And then you had a note from the CIP.
Yeah, we had a note from the CIP, which Christine Bluen, a business administrator led, and, uh, the committee accepted our CIP report. We don't, I don't think either Christine or I think it's exactly what we wanna accomplish, but we, 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 we really did make some forward progress this year. And, um, it's a new thing, and it, I think it's good that we're doing it.
Excellent. I really do appreciate that, that was great. I, I got an email that I was asked to share with the board, and I wanted folks to have a chance to see it, simply from a resident who chose to come to the, uh, the meeting last night. We just got done talking about how we will communicate about the project, and we have such great things to say about the district, in, a day in the district yesterday. And I don't, this, this resident wasn't looking to be, wasn't looking to be publicly praised for the comments, but here were the comments that I thought were important, that we oughta share, because it's a concern, and we need to work at this. The resident was really pleased with, with everything that went on, and with the process, and the, you know, the, the candidates, but was concerned that, and I quote, despite an article being published in the paper, copied on the solutions page, which we appreciate the coverage, noticed on the school website and the town website, the turnout was so low last night. And I will tell you that unfortunately, we had the two finalists who will, one of whom will become the next superintendent of schools for Newmarket, and there were, I don't think, twenty people, yeah, who attended the public opportunity to meet and greet with the candidates last night. It was a cold night, we were double booked against the selectmen who had to meet, or not had to meet, but were in, the, the council, I mean, I'm sorry, who was in session last night, I believe. And so there were lots of other things, and it's a tough time of year to compete, but I, I think we have to continue to do everything that we can to try to communicate, because as important as we believe the decision that we have to make based upon the process we've been through, uh, as, as important as we think it is, we didn't get as many, as many people as I'd hoped that we might to come out to offer up their feedback and their thoughts about that, so.
And so this goes back to what we were just talking about, you know...
We really gotta reach out.
And it's a reality, and I, I agree with Al's comment that people need to, people need to have a civic responsibility, but the reality is, we live in busy times, and it's not like it used to be, where people showed up to meetings, and so we need to look, we did a good job getting it through multiple sources here, but it's a reality, we gotta get out and...
Find more critical mass out there to try to...
You may have to let people know it's going to be a safe place to be there.
Yeah.
Then when people come to this board meeting, that it, there's not going to be sneers and snickers.
Right.
And that everybody will be respectful of each other. And let's make it the, the way, cause it was nice, we, we did have a full house for a while, let's get that back. How do we get that back?
And I think that when we have things, it's, you know, when we have things like, you know, your next superintendent is in the room, come help us decide which one it is, you know, that, I have to say, uh, there was a, there was a very broad representation, given that there was only, you know, eighteen or twenty people in the room, in terms of past conversations and past deliberations and decisions, and, and so I was thankful that we had as much diversity in the room as we had, it just would've been nice to have that diversity with fifty or a hundred, so.
And yet, in some respects, it was really kinda...
It was really nice and intimate, we were able to have a lot of conversation with a few people, so you're right.
Yeah.
I just shared that because it was shared with me, and I, I plucked out of it that, that really, you know, despite the fact that it was well advertised, we think, maybe we have to find other ways to advertise and be more creative, so.
It was, it was helpful to me too, as a, as a board member, making, um, you know, doing the analysis, to listen to other people's questions, that you can determine what was important to them.
Mm-hmm.
It was, so thanks to those people who, who, who showed up.
If we can get the newsletter going, there are things we can do.
There are things we can do, yeah, we can get the newsletter going. Anything else under correspondence? Hearing none, we have a resignation before us in the packet. Claudette Moran, who has for some period of time been Spanish teacher at the junior senior high school, uh, is resigning and retiring, uh, here at the end of the month. Offered her thanks to the school board and the school for our support, and I would seek a motion to accept the resignation of Claudette Moran.
I regret, regretfully accept that, and we would just like to wish her the best of her time with her family and that.
Absolutely.
We look forward to seeing her.
Is that appropriate?
Is that?
Segundo?
Segundo.
Segundo. She'd appreciate it.
I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Mr. Kennison, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We wish her all the best. The minutes from our non-public sessions of December sixth and thirteenth were included, as is our last meeting on the seventeenth. I seek a motion to accept the minutes of December sixth.
I moved, uh, so moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? They were very brief. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? No extensions, we were all there, we are unanimous. Seek a motion to accept the non-public meeting minutes of December thirteenth.
So moved. I know.
I'm trying to find them.
On the back of your book.
So December sixth was our initial conversation of the candidates, December thirteenth was the interview day. I have a motion from Mr. Kennison, a second from Ms. McKinney, any discussion or amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. And now the public and non-public minutes of our last regular board meeting, December seventeenth, I seek a motion to approve...
So moved.
Need a second? Did anybody see anything that oughta be adjusted there? To make it clear, there was a non-public session in which we talked, uh, about the search process, that started at five-thirty. We came out and came into the public session that night at seven. We went back into non-public session at the end of the meeting, so, um, and those are both noted on the, the last page, in at six oh eight, and back out, and then in at eight seventeen, and back out. I have a motion from Ms. McKinney, a second from Ms. Shelton, is there any discussion or amendment? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous, thank you. The manifest is floating around.
Make a motion to approve the January seventh, nineteen sixteen, nineteen sixteen. Two thousand sixteen. Payroll and AP manifest, payroll manifest is two hundred forty-five thousand, two hundred eight, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-five cents. Counts payable manifest is sixty-six thousand, eight hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-five cents, for a total of three and twelve thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine and eighty cents.
Need a second? A motion from Mr. Zink, a second from Mr. Kennison, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? We're unanimous. We still have the matter of the superintendent to discuss, so I seek a motion to go into non-public session under ninety-one A three, normal number two, section B, for the hiring of any person as a public employee.
So moved.
I have Al Zink, Elizabeth McKinney, seconding on a roll call vote. Mr. Zink?
Aye.
Ms. Shelton?
Aye.